All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start with our exemplary people. We're here to, we're gonna recognize this evening, our Massey and Jacque Hollow/STEM robotics team. So, we're gonna actually have all the kids who are on that come over here.
Good evening. A little background as they're trying to set up and get things going. We've had a very successful season this year. We are the Southern New England champions in both the high school and middle school division. Little background on our program, we're now in our ninth year as a program. Our fourth year, Zach, how many middle school years did you do?
Yes.
Two years. Fifth middle school year. This year, we had just under 140 students total involved between Jacque Hollow and Massey. We competed with 14 different teams, five middle school teams and nine high school teams this year, doing nine regional events throughout Connecticut and then our Southern New England Championships in Massachusetts. The three robots in front of you are the three robots that have qualified to go to the World Championships. This year's event is called "In the Zone," and the goal is to pick up the movable goals, which are blue and red. They weigh close to seven pounds. And then stacking cones on top of them and then placing them in different parts of the field. So, all right, guys, go ahead.
That's crazy.
So, the robots are completely designed, built, maintained, and programmed by the students. We have many adult volunteers that come and help with the program, but one rule, the adult volunteers do nothing to help build the robots. They ask questions, they make them defend what they're doing, challenge them to come up with new solutions and new ideas, but everything is built, designed, and maintained by the students. We're very excited about heading to Worlds. We'll be going to the World Championships April 24th through the 29th. We have a trip we're taking currently at this point, it'll be 27 students to compete at the World Championships, which there will be roughly 600 high school teams competing, representing 35 countries, and 150 middle school teams, and then there will also be about 80 college teams that will be there competing.
Bill, I can remember when this started and-
We started with 22 students nine years ago.
And it was basic, moving around, and it's unbelievable.
So, now, the two larger robots use gyroscopes to help them make sure they can maintain their balance and not tip over when they get top-heavy. There are sensors on just about every motion. The programming is, there are a ton of different automated features that they put into everything to try and speed the functions up. We talk a ton about physics and gear ratios and balance. So, this is, this is true STEM. We're going across, you know, multiple disciplines. There's actually been discussions, I've had drawings on my board that are talking about calculus topics that are being used in terms of how things are gonna relate and how the time works out and how challenges go, so.
And I just wanna say that I think the, you know, the students are unbelievable. I come here and watch the weekend events that happen, it's just great, the commitment that the students have. But, Bill, your commitment and the people that work with you, I mean, that's what's made this program so great, so thank you for doing that.
Your support has been incredible in terms of the nine years we're now doing this. I'm looking forward to many more and then hopefully we continue to have the success we're having. Takes a little luck, and we definitely have that this year.
And congratulations to the students on your wins and becoming champions. We do have little certificates for you. We want you to be able to have something, know that we are proud of you and we're happy that you're a part of Monroe School, so thank you very much. Thank you. And I know the parents have to drive them everywhere, so thank you for doing that, bringing them here every week.
Yeah, I'll hand those out to everybody to make sure. But if we can get all the kids to come together so that we can get a picture of the weapons that we brought.
Absolutely. So, guys, grab the robot, drag them over here, bring them over so they're in front of everybody, and come over so we can get a group shot.
You gotta squish together.
Squish together, some in front, some in back.
Here, Lizzie, you're the shortest, so I guess I'm in front.
It's kinda sad, though.
Oh, yeah, guys, group up like team.
Shorter in the front, taller in the back.
And maybe kind of like bend, bend at the knees, the ones at the front, just kind of squat down.
They wanna be told, let's get close together.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill. Congratulations.
All right, don't leave any cones behind.
All right, we will move on. We don't have anything to report tonight for the chairman's report, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Kevin and Will, you are up.
Okay, so, not a ton going on this week. We have a shortened week off of the SAT and, well, hopefully, the SAT day. So, just to start off, spring sports have really, you know, come into fruition. Everybody's gearing up for that. You know, the most important one, volleyball, has started, and everyone's working as hard as they can to be the best team, and we are. So, I mean, they are. So, not to show my bias, but, um, yeah, everyone's talking about, you know, spring sports and how excited they are, and there's just, it's fun this time of year because there's just a general buzz of excitement, kids getting ready for their sports, so. Also, we have the Fifth Annual Da Vinci Festival, which is a sort of showcase for all the arts taking place K through 12 at Massey. And even if you're not an artsy person, it's always fun to go out and see the, just the things that kids make. I mean, I'm not artistic in any way, but just to see something that my classmates make or made, it's really incredible to see that somebody's capable of doing that at such a young age. And feeding off, that's gonna be taking place Friday, March 23rd, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and also Saturday, March 24th, 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Feeding off of that, we have a play going on on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, so if you wanna stick around after the Da Vinci Festival or on Saturday, come back for the play, "The Dining Room." And for you board members, make sure to email Mr. Cobza if you're interested in receiving a free ticket.
All right. So, as Kevin mentioned, we will be hopefully administering the SAT to grades nine through 11. So, basically, grades nine and 10 get a kind of altered version of the SAT called PSAT nine and 10, where it's, I mean, basically a mirror image of the SAT, and it like really, really prepares you and makes you know what, like, because people hear like, oh, SAT, like standardized test, but this is exactly what you need to know, exactly how to prepare for it. And the juniors get a chance to actually like take the SAT, which is pretty cool, Connecticut offers that, and like get into college, so, of course. And then, we just, I just wanna touch on the fact, we had a, I'm sure many of you know, and Mr. Bautista will be talking about it later, but we had a student forum on school violence earlier this week, and I just wanna say that the school consensus, I think most everyone went, I think it was over a thousand students went, and I think while not everyone thinks it's, like, it obviously didn't fix everything, I think the entire school can kind of agree upon the fact that it was like a good first step towards reform, giving students a voice and letting everyone know that they have the chance to speak out if they have an issue with really anything, and not just school violence, if they have a problem with anything in the school, in the district. It's like they're more than welcome to share that with everyone, with Mr. Cobza, with Mr. Bautista, so, I think that was really cool.
Great, thank you, Will. And I'll add on that, Alan and I were present at the assembly last week on that, and I thought it was really well-prepared. Thank you, Joe, because I know it was a big task to get that all organized, and it went very well, and it was a very positive message. And we had a handful of students who spoke, and we were asked questions, and we all responded and spoke, and I, and most of the sense of the children were, the students, only not children, but the students were that, you know, they're, you know, they think we're doing a good job in keeping the school and the school safe. Did you not get that sense also?
I think so. I think the students, again, I wanna echo Joe, you did a great job of giving the students an opportunity to speak and to talk about. There were five students who spoke, and what really impressed me was the audience, how they listened to their fellow students speak and, you know, gave them the respect that they deserved and cheered for them after it was over. So, whether they agreed with what they had to say or not, it was just a real positive experience. You know, we did have the Ken Kellogg, our first selectman, was there, the chief of police was there.
JP.
JP was there, and actually, at the end, JP talked to the students about how they can get involved and what they need to do to get involved. So, I thought it was a good step, and Joe also had the register of voters there. So, after it was over, I walked over to the table, there were a dozen or so kids there registering to vote. So, I think that the message is getting out there. You know, we did talk about there are other national walkout days or other days that are coming up, and we're gonna have to take that and be respectful to the students, but we want the students to be respectful also. So, we're gonna have to figure out what's gonna happen as we go through these times. But it's nice to have the students have a voice.
All right. Anybody have any other committee reports before we move on? All right, we will move on then. We will have public participation if anybody'd like to speak. You need to come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Hello, my name is Amanda Wall, and my address is 95 Bart Road, Monroe, Connecticut 06468.
Great, thank you.
And what I would like to talk about today is our, my thoughts on having armed school security officers. I feel like the presence of an armed officer would increase student anxiety, yet in the sense that we feel that we would have to like be even more on watch for our behavior because I know, as somebody who deals with a lot of anxiety, I would be extremely uncomfortable knowing that someone who is armed with a firearm would be watching me constantly, and I also feel like the cost is a concern because according to the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, in order to have an armed officer at school, you would first have to pay to obtain a license, and the original license would cost about $1,450 and would have to be renewed every two years for $625. The officer would then have to go through an eight-hour, where Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection course on criminal justice, public safety, and first aid. They would then have to get a blue card endorsement, which would require them to go through another eight-hour firearm safety and training course, and would need then yearly refresher and safety courses in order to qualify to use that firearm. And the department also says that these officers need to be of, and I quote, "good moral character." Who would decide what is of good moral character? Who would evaluate what is good moral character and what detrays embodied good moral character? I also firmly believe that having an armed, that having a school employee come into the building every day with the thought in the back of their mind that they may have to shoot someone is not suitable for a school environment. And there's also the concern of what if the armed officer misreads a situation and shoots an unarmed student, staff, or faculty member? Whose liability would it be? Who's responsible for that? And I feel like the pros and the process of obtaining an armed school security officer far outweighs the, I'm not sure if I would call them benefits, but the, but I feel like having them in school would be more of a distraction than a safety. They'd be more distracting than their offer of safety.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on then to the report of the superintendent.
Okay, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month, so that's why you have the little token of appreciation. You know, you volunteer your time, you come here twice a month, you know, there's emails back and forth, we talk. You spend a lot of time making sure that the things are going the way they're supposed to go, so we just wanted to say thank you. I know the kids may not know it, but they thank you too because what you do, what you do really affects them, so thank you very much for being part of that, so I just wanted to start with that. Gabby, you're gonna review the fund statement, please?
So, this month, we have four claims that are over the $25,000 mark, so we're continuing to watch them. They do seem to have stabilized, though. As you can see from the graph in your board packet, it's, the balance has stayed some relatively consistent over the past couple months. It's dropped by $30,000, which really isn't that much in the grand scheme of things. The big thing from the finance department, both on the town side and the board side, is we're going to be testing the, an upgraded version of Munis. Munis basically puts out their versions, and they have about a two-and-a-half-year life cycle. One of the things we discovered when we first went to Munis is you really don't wanna be at the newest version because then you become a little bit of a guinea pig, and that's not always the best thing. So, we like to kind of wait until the version's been out for at least six to nine months. So, we're actually in test right now, and we plan to go live in May. The thought is that the budget will have passed, and that'll give us, it'll give us the perfect time to roll over the new budget and be on the newest version of Munis, so that's, that's kind of the big thing for finance, from both town and board of ed. So, and several of us are going to actually be attending the Tyler Conference, so we're gonna have the newest and the latest, and we're gonna learn everything right before we go live, so hopefully it'll all work.
Great.
Just an update on the budget. The budget right now is in the hands of the Board of Finance. On the 6th of this month, Jack and I, Gabby, and the administrators all went to the Board of Finance for their workshop. We answered their questions, you know, they looked at, they looked at our budget. They didn't have a lot of questions in our budget, so it's in their hands right now. But Jack and I are going to all the PTOs this month. We're talking about school safety, but we're also talking about the budget. So, that was one of the things, we had a plan to talk about school budget, but parents were concerned and wanted us to talk a little bit about school safety, so we're doing that at all the PTOs, and going to the senior center also. So, hopefully, on the first Tuesday of April, we'll have a positive. So, that's, we talked about the student forum on school violence, and I thank you guys for talking about that. The Da Vinci, I left you a card that I'm sure you already got. It is an unbelievable event to come here on Friday and Saturday to see all our students and the work that they do, K-12, and it's great also to watch the students come in with their parents to find their artwork and to, you know, show their pride in the artwork that they do. So, if you can make it here on Friday or Saturday, it's a, it's a great event. And there is some possibility of snow on Wednesday, and it's a bigger possibility, it seems like, every hour.
Yep.
So, you know, we're gonna monitor it, we're gonna do the best we can, you know, no one wants to just cancel school for no reason, but if the weather deems it, we will do that. And then we'll have to figure out where we go from there. Right now, our last day is Friday, the 26th. No, I'm sorry. 22nd, sorry, sorry. If we have one more day, that goes to Monday, and then we'll have to talk about if there are other options for that. We do have 182 days, the law is 180 days. At your next board meeting, you're going to vote on graduation for both middle school and the high school, so we can have some conversations at that meeting, because certainly the weather will be fine after that. But we'll have a conversation-
We hope.
-after that, on that day, so. So, that's really all I had.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for John? All right, here we go. Now, we will move on to item nine, which is the armed school security officer position. So, as we talked about last time, we were talking about having this position, which is either a retired police officer, retired military. Here's the situation. Our current school resource officer, who is a police officer, is active military and is being deployed for the next year. So, that leaves Fawn Hollow without anybody. It takes a full year of training for a police officer to become a school resource officer. We could not go without, for a full year, not having somebody at that school. As we talked about wanting to go to this, we kind of feel that school resource officer is much better fit for us than a school security officer, but we need to get somebody hired, and we actually have somebody in mind who is a recently retired police officer in town who will be able to take over this position. And what will happen is when the school resource officer is needed at Fawn Hollow for some sort of program, because they're the only ones who can go in the classroom and interact with kids and stuff, the security officer will go up to the middle school and the resource officer will come down to do whatever program they need to do. And this is just temporary for the year until our school resource officer comes back from active duty.
And, you know, I met with the first selectman, the chief of police, and Jack and I met with them to talk about this. Everyone agrees that SRO would be the ideal situation. It's a, it's a police officer that's trained, they've been in our schools now for the last six or seven years. We've had them at the high school longer than that. They really are involved, and there's a lot of training involved. So, that would be the ideal situation, and I think that's what everybody wants. But because of the situation where the SRO at the, at the elementary school, who's beloved, I mean, the parents have talked to us about that, they, they think she's doing a great job, they, the kids like being around her, is going to be deployed, she's gonna be gone for the month. So, the SSO is really just for the safety part of it. Now, the good part is, it is a police officer that has been trained and has been in Monroe for over 25 years, was a lieutenant, and so what I did was I looked at Newtown. Newtown has SSOs, and they have, they have SROs, but they also have these, these security officers in their buildings. So, what you have in your place is a job description, and this is taken directly from Newtown. This is not my original work, this is directly from Newtown, and I just went through it and kind of made it our own from Monroe. Now, the problem is, a police officer that's retired can't be rehired by the police department because there's that retirement issue, so they can't be, so it would have to be hired by us. And so, if you look at the supervision, it would be the, we decided that it would be directly supervised by the assistant superintendent or the superintendent, and the principals of the building would also be involved on a day-to-day basis. But with respect to the training of weapons and the use of weapons, it would be supervised by the police department. And the police department is the training. You know, I think Amanda said it right with the law, the law's really specific about how that training has to be, and so our police department has to do that training. But since the person that we're looking for, and in our job description, we only want retired police, they have had the training upfront already, and they would just have to have the, by the yearly arms training so that they can, you know, make sure they have the experience. We also put in here 15 years of experience. Maybe that's too much, but we felt that at least they should have 15 years of being a police officer, and they, if, they'd have to leave the department under good standings, they'd have to, you know, not have any issues of leaving the department, so that's all in there. And there are things they can't do. They, they are not, they can't interfere with the school at all. They, they can't do any disciplinary. We're not, they're not here to discipline kids, so we don't want them to be involved in any disciplinary, and they can't have access to school records because it's a FERPA violation. So, there are some real restrictions for them, they're really there for security, and so that's the point of the, of having them there. So, what that would do, if we kept them on after, is that right now, we have five schools and four SROs. If in the future, we kept this person on, we'd have five schools, four SROs, and one school security officer who could go around to the schools when SROs are going between schools, because right now, we share one. So, at least we could have security in every school full-time. So, that's really what it is. It's $22 an hour is what Newtown pays, and they're finding that they can still get people, retired police officers, to do that.
And the, the way the budget will work is even though the person is an employee by us, it will be covered by the police department budget, so the police department will reimburse us so that it doesn't, like John said, there are certain restrictions to be rehired because of the union and the pension and retirement, so they will reimburse the board for-
For next year.
...for the cost of this. And we will say the Fawn Hollow parents have been very vocal-
Right.
...to the first selectman's office and the police department because this person is being deployed, that they do not want their school to be left unattended with no security person there.
And the chief would love to have an SRO cover for her, it's just not possible.
We don't have, there's nobody trained currently in the police department, so they would really need to spend a year training somebody for that.
Yeah, it'd be too late.
And it'll be too late, the person will be back in a year or so. This is the best situation for the short term that we can do, and like I said, it is somebody from town that is recently retired from our police department.
Is this for the short term, or are we looking at this being, carrying this person over to the next school year?
We would probably carry them over because we are one person short. We have only four SROs for five schools, so we would probably carry this person after the person gets back so that we would have five full-time people, and this person would just go and bounce to different schools during certain times like arrival, dismissal, playground duty when the kids are out at recess.
And if somebody's on leave or sick for a week, they can do that.
Correct, correct, because that also leaves us vulnerable, because if somebody is out sick, then we don't have anybody.
And again, they are former police, but they won't be able to wear uniforms, so we'll provide them with a uniform so that they stand out.
And our person will be back next year.
Somebody moves or retires or quits or something, we're a little vulnerable there, too. Hopefully-
Absolutely, absolutely. We've been lucky that this situation actually hasn't come up before, but yeah, no, it's a full year of training by, that they have, somebody has to do to be able to be the school resource officer.
And this person will just work student days.
Yeah.
So, they're not gonna work in the summer.
Right.
Alan?
If we needed more, how would they be vetted? Like, who would do the vetting process?
Like, who would do the vetting process?
Well, you know, that, the law is pretty clear on, you know, all, they have to have, if they were in the service, they have to have an honorable discharge, they have to, they have to have recommendations from their police department, and very positive recommendations from the police department. So when I talked to Chief Salvatore and Keith White, they would work with us on that, they'll do all the background checks, they'll do all of that, that stuff as they would do for any police officer, and they would help us with that. And again, they, they really want us to know that they, if they had their way, they would have SROs also. It's just, the way it's working out, it's just not possible at this point. And this is an option, and we've always only had four for the five schools, and this is an option to get us fully staffed.
Right, and I don't think that the police department has the manpower to actually pull a police officer off the street to, to put it in the school. That's also the issue.
Isn't it? Right now, they're training people just to work on the street because they're down some people.
Right.
Speaking of training, I mean, I'm assuming that this ASO would require training either on an annual basis or, but who, whose responsibility would that be?
Police department.
Police department training, and is that something that the Board of Ed would pay for? Is that something, how does that work?
I think they, that'd be part of the training that they just do with all their officers, so it won't cost us anything. That was one of the questions that we had too.
Anybody else? All right, then, I need a motion to approve this new position beginning in April so we can have this person in place. When does she go? When does she go?
April. April, she's going to be deployed.
Right. She will be deployed, and we want to have this person in place before she goes to spend some time with her before she leaves our district for the year.
Again, are we voting for this, just for this, this, or is this going to get continuation into?
This would be a creation of the position.
In general?
In general, yes.
And then we would have to come back after next year in your, in our budget.
Correct.
And then you would vote on it, whether you wanted to afford in our budget.
Correct. Right, this is not in our budget, so if this is something permanent, then I would imagine it'd need to be in our budget as opposed to the police department's budget, which is where the SROs lie. Because then this is an employee here.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with the hiring of the ASO position.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second? Oh, thank you. All right, any other further discussion? David, do you have any comments, being a former retired police officer?
I always have a comment. But on this topic, you, I was jotting down questions as you were going through, and then as you continued to inform us about this, you answered my questions, the, about the pension, because I knew that could be, that could be a conflict, so that explains that, you know, that they're an employee of the VOE. And I was going to ask if there was a retired Monroe police officer available, because they know the community, the officers know them in an emergency, it's not a stranger, where you can have some situations. So that makes me feel a lot more comfortable. In the grand scheme of things, I like the idea of having every school covered by an SRO, obviously number one, that's always our first choice, but this is the next best thing. I'm not a proponent, proponent of arming teachers, so I like this idea. And I think that to cover vacations and days off, it just gives us that resource. When I drop off my son, I love seeing that officer there. Makes me a lot more comfortable seeing that police car out front, so this is the next best thing. And as, as an instructor myself, we can have some conversations with the, with the police department, but I know they're instructors and they're very capable, so it's that right person that needs to be in this system, so I'm, I'm all in favor.
Thank you.
I've read the, I've read the policy, so, yeah.
Great, thanks, David. We appreciate that, for you for giving your expertise.
Yes. Small question. So why don't we make this a temporary position and work towards creating another SRO? That's something.
That would be the police department that would need to do that, that would not be us. They would need to institute somebody that they are going to train and do that.
Do you know if there's a plan to do that?
I don't think so.
They have four SROs for the five schools, they're just saying it's difficult for them to staff five, you know, five, and they've never had it. So of all the years we've had SROs, it's always been four for the five schools, and I don't think there's a plan to get another one going.
Maybe, I'm sorry, is that because the close proximity of Fawn Hollow and Jackie Hollow? Is that how they?
Actually, the shared position is Monroe, well, and Stepney.
That's odd.
Different times, stuff.
Yes, because they have different times.
That's something that we can certainly look into on the town budget side, if we wanted to put it in the budget that the police department ups their compliment by one officer, so that we're not taking from, from the street or from, from a different program.
If somebody leaves, we have three for five.
Correct.
If somebody retires, right, until they get someone trained up and everything like that. There's also a National Association of School Resource Officers, which is phenomenal, they share information, they share, you know, situations and knowledge, so it's, it's very professionally done. So maybe as a community, for next year's budget, we could say to the police department, we want you to add a police officer in for this reason and fund it. We'd have to vote on that budget-wise, which is always a possibility, as we would have to put this position in our next year's budget, so we would have to push for that. And I'd be all in favor of that.
Absolutely.
And it really is temporary because you're going to have to vote on the budget for the following year, so.
The other thing is the school resource officers, the four or hopefully maybe five of them during the summertime, they're at the, at the disposal of the police department. So summertime is high vacation time, it cuts down on overtime, it replaces people that leave, so it's a good resource for the community.
Right, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Yep, all right, anything else? All right, hearing done, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to new business, and we will now enter into our executive session for our self-evaluation. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Any discussion? We will not return here, and we will not conduct any business after this, and we'll be just adjourned from there. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes.